From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California, grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation. Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy, and our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, thank you for your patience. I felt a little bit like a queen up here, but some didn't feel right about it. Okay, we're going to move on to our afternoon agenda for Kern County Board of Supervisors, 2:00 PM, Agenda April 29. The board has reconvened. Madam Clerk, would you please call the board? Thank you. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. We'll turn to our county council now for any report necessary on actions taken in closed
Good afternoon, thank you. Today, following the AM agenda, your board met on Items 77 through 80, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to our consent matters, which begin on Page 4, and they include Items 9 and 11 through 13. On Page 5, all items listed, 14 through 19, Matter 20, has been withdrawn. So the only matters for Page 5 are 14 through 19, with 20 being withdrawn. Item, excuse me, Page Number 6, all items listed, 21 to 26. On Page 7, all items listed, 27 through 33. Page 8, all items listed, 34 through 39. Page 9, all items listed, 41 through 48. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 50. Page 10, all items listed, 49 to 54. Page 11, all items listed, 55 to 61. And on page 12, all items listed, 62 to 68. The consent matters are considered by staff and county family to be routine and non-controversial, and that's why they end up on a consent matters, to not tie up the entire day talking about matters that are routine for the county. But if a member of the public would like to weigh in on any of those, now would be the time to do so. Please head on down. Give us your name, please. Good afternoon and welcome.
My name's Karen Bessard.
Hi, Karen.
Hi. Number 61.
Okay, item number 61 is a proposed collapse of the extra help Youth Services Officer flexible classification series. Your thoughts, Karen?
I was wondering, which I believe I already know the answer, if SEIU was contacted about this collapsing of series?
That's a great question. Let me find out how best to address your inquiry. Counsel?
I'm sorry, can you report your, repeat your inquiry, please?
If SEIU was contacted regarding the collapsing of the series for extra help Youth Service Officer?
Item number 61. Do we know? Because I actually don't know.
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm sorry, I can't provide an answer right now.
Supervisor, Madam Chair, we do have a response.
Oh, we do? Well, that was fast. Thank you. Just a moment, Karen.
Madam Chair, Tracy Eldridge, Chief Human Resources Officer. Yes, SEIU was contacted. We had a few confirmed matters on the item, and they agreed with the item, therefore it is in front of you today.
I see. Thank you so very much. Karen, was that your only question? It's a great question. Thank you for asking it. Nice to see you. Okay, seeing no other interests on the consent agenda, I'll return to my colleagues for comment or action.
Motion on consent.
Second.
We have a motion on consent. Please cast your votes.
Just a quick question. Do we need to amend that to adjourn as the Kern County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority?
What he said.
We do.
Yes, we do. So does your motion include that friendly amendment, Supervisor? Excellent. It was friendlier than closed session, huh?
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Just kidding. Okay, so now, as Kern Sanitation Authority, we have two matters before us. They are consent matters. They have a C, as you note, that's separate from our regular consent agenda, which has a CA. But as Kern Sanitation Authority, we do have items one and two for proposal under consent. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on these matters? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn as Kern Sanitation Authority and reconvene as Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District once we approve of that agenda.
Yeah, motion.
We have motions on C1 and C2. Please cast your votes.
Who made the second?
Jeff. Okay. Excuse me, Supervisor Flores. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, now, a motion to adjourn as Kern Sanitation Authority, reconvene as Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Now, sitting as Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District, we have, we have items C3, or the C is the sit above, but three, four, five, to consider under this consent agenda, the consent agenda of the Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District. Are there members of the public who would like to weigh in? Not all at once, please. Thank you.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And as part of that, we will be adjourning as Ford City Taft Heights Sanitation District and reconvening as the Kern County Board of Supervisors.
Yes.
Without a wardrobe change, too. That's pretty good. Okay, there we go.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay. Did we do that? Okay, we're done with that. Outstanding. This brings us to the public presentations portion of today's agenda. For those of you who would like to follow along more formally, there are agendas at the back of the room. Please help yourself. This is public presentations. Under this portion of the agenda, we'd ask you to limit your observations and input to matters that are within the jurisdiction of the Kern County Board of Supervisors but are not on today's specific agenda. That way, we have some authority or have some business in it at all. But this is the time. We do graciously ask that you honor the time commitment, and, you know, we'll work through that as we move through it. But you're a pro, so I don't have any concerns. Good afternoon. Good to see you.
Janine Adams, Tehachapi. And I just would like to thank the board for what they've been doing, particularly you, Latisha, going up to Sacramento and trying to do what you can do with our legislators in the California body, okay? Particularly in this area that has to do with Medicaid slash Medi-Cal. This board, I've asked several times to do what you can with your power that you have as this body, elected officials, to make sure that our county does not have the cuts that are proposed on the federal level. Again, I have talked to this board about the, let's see, what's it called again? The Assembly Joint Resolution Number Three by SHAVO, where we want our local people like Shannon Grove to sign onto that. And I'd ask this board if you can use whatever your power is to do that, okay? The second thing is, I'd like to thank, I think it is my supervisor, Parlier, and Supervisor Peters, for going actually back to DC to do whatever they can do to help our community. So thank you so much for that and for being concerned about what's going on in our community. Have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hello, good afternoon. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm used to having this whole form to myself. Good afternoon. My name's Karen Bessard, lifelong Kern County resident, 19-year county legacy employee and constituent of District Three. This morning's meeting showed the lack of communication and honesty between the union and its members. I advise my coworkers and the public of the truth and where to find the information that supports said truth, i.e., current contract to former Chief Human Resource Officer Devon Brown's Board of Supervisor presentation in December of 2021, county's website for proposals, budgets, and salary, emails that were brought to light after the strike, and laws. For example, the fact that so many members have not received a raise in the last 10 years as the last contract had significant wage and COLA increases, and the majority has received double-digit raises, and that the last contract was to be built off of to ensure an ongoing increase in wages for all employees. Many employees, i.e., admin coordinators, clerk of the board, legal secretaries, and paralegals, have suffered because of the union's lack of communication, honesty, and understanding of negotiating in several different situations, not just the contract. The current union's leadership not only lacks transparency but keeps silent about negotiations and throws out vague words that are meant to invoke action. However, most of the employees' statements are true, but the presentation is skewed due to the above. Employees and services are suffering. Both sides have failed to build off the current contract to ensure livable wages and quality services. I am requesting the county to research the employees' statements and to contact the employees who requested a meeting directly. As the reason why I asked about the collapsing of a series, I'm part of a collapsed series. There's legal secretaries and senior legal secretaries. I have nowhere to go. And that's what happens when you collapse the series. And for the election guys, we do have, we have several employees making less than McDonald's workers. I spoke of this before. We had, I think, an over-20-year employee, I think 25, who makes like $18 an hour. So, thank you.
Karen, thank you. I appreciate you very much.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Janet Armentar.
Hi, Janet.
Hi. What will it take? What will it take to end the tragic fate of dogs abandoned to face the dangers of speeding vehicles, predation by coyotes, poisoning from chemicals, shootings, or starvation in our community's orchards? What will it take to prevent the heartbreaking abuse of tiny puppies whose muzzles are cruelly duct-taped and discarded in bags to perish in a Kern County orchard? These locations, which provide sustenance for many, become a sight of horror for these innocent animals, suffering at the hands of inhumane individuals. Being a dog feeder and rescuer is an experience filled with daily encounters that are heartbreaking. It involves witnessing countless situations with dogs of all ages, from frightened puppies to weary seniors of all ages, often abandoned on the desolate backroads of the county. The scene is a harrowing display of lifeless and mutilated bodies scattered across streets and on the sides of roadways, discarded in bags like garbage. What will it take for society to hold individuals accountable for the suffering and neglect they impose on animals relying on us for their survival and well-being? These animals are not wild. Many are bred for profit and abandoned in desolate places where they no longer serve a purpose. Backyard breeders operate in this county without proper licensing, allowing their activities to go unnoticed and without consequence. The urgent need for action is clear, as these innocent animals suffer immensely due to human negligence and cruelty. When will people find their humanity and choose to act with integrity rather than ignoring the plight of these vulnerable beings? What will it take? Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair.
My name is Shelley Colgrin.
Hi, Shelley.
And addressing the crisis of dog abuse and abandonment in Kern County requires practical and effective measures. Bakersfield Strays, a local dog rescue organization, has proposed several initiatives through their Clear the Orchard campaign. Many residents recognize that the lack of enforcement of existing dog abandonment laws leaves no consequences for those who abandon their pets, which ultimately encourages this troubling behavior. To address the issue of abandoned dogs, we can implement several key strategies. First, establishing stabilization stations for emergency care in rural areas would provide immediate assistance to these animals. Second, installing surveillance cameras in regions with high rates of dog abandonment is crucial for enforcing existing laws. Rural field officers should also be deployed to respond to incidences in areas often overlooked, particularly near the fields and orchards surrounding Bakersfield. Third, placing clear signage that outlines the penalties for dog abandonment and abuse could serve as a deterrent, discouraging individuals from irresponsibly discarding their pets. Fourth, we need policy reform that recognizes the plight of abandoned and abused dogs as a significant community concern rather than a mere afterthought. As you glance around this room, you will notice photographs showcasing just a fraction of the dogs we've rescued from abandonment in our community. Many of these animals were spared from a tragic fate thanks to the dedication of compassionate volunteers and concerned citizens who consistently step up to help. Unfortunately, some have not survived the harsh realities they faced. Let's come together to enhance the beauty of Kern County. These steps are reasonable and achievable, and by collaborating, we can create a more vibrant and inviting community for everyone. Thank you.
Fiona Thomas.
Hi, Fiona.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your attention. I aim to be concise and direct. Today, I will address the challenging working and living conditions at the county shelter on Fruitvale Avenue. This issue is critical and deserves our immediate attention. The environment in that location is inadequate. The facility, previously a mechanical garage, now consists of a metal structure housing numerous large mobile kennels. The summer heat brings unbearable conditions, leading to frequent cases of heat stroke among dogs. This extreme environment poses significant and ongoing threats to their respiratory health, often resulting in upper respiratory infection, URIs. Unfortunately, in an already overcrowded shelter, these dogs face euthanasia simply from suffering from a common cold, regardless of their good behavior and temperament. The workers endure grueling hours in oppressive heat, tirelessly cleaning up urine and feces. Many personal stories remain unheard, revealing how often they fall ill after their demanding shifts. They return home exhausted, seeking rest to recover, only to face the same conditions the next day. The facility lies on a septic tank, requiring pumping several times a day for proper flow. This is a significant challenge, as the drainage system frequently backs up, forcing workers to walk through food waste and feces while wearing rubber boots and gloves to clear the drains. The situation is not only unpleasant but also stresses the difficult conditions the staff must endure to keep the facility operational. The staff's dedication is truly remarkable. They pour their hearts and souls into their work, often without the appreciation they deserve. They return daily, driven by a profound commitment to the animals and their care. They understand that without their efforts, these animals would endure unnecessary suffering. They are compassionate and care about both their roles and the well-being of the animals. It is unacceptable for both to endure such deplorable conditions. They deserve better than the current level of funding and support they receive. The groundbreaking for the new shelter location is anticipated to begin in early 2026. However, we need immediate action, and we are relying on you, county officials, to help improve the situation for the dogs and the employees of the shelter. Thank you very much.
I know you have more people to come. I love you, by the way. You're my people. I just, I'm crazy about you. But I want to meet with you. So, you know, if you could head to my office or call my office and talk to Christian, we're texting about you right now. You know, I want to meet, because this is exciting. 10 years ago, or right when I joined the board, actually, that was 13 years ago, my God, I got with the animal community, just you're reminding me of that. My heart is so full right now. My cup runneth over, because we created a plan countywide, and we did spay and neuter aggressively throughout the, throughout the county. Our colleagues were crazy about it, super supportive. We put a bunch of money in it. We actually got to no kill by 20, in 2020, while I was chair, which was just, felt like such a huge deal. But of course, it was COVID. It was six months after COVID, and those were, that was the number of the result of all that work we had done, the education and other pieces of caring for our animals properly. And then we got really set back. And so much of what you're saying is compounded from those challenges that started then. I'm not trying to cut anybody off. I'm just very excited that you're here, because with you guys, and I mean, we can draft a new plan and implement it ASAP. And I mean it. It just takes a lot of community, a lot of education, a lot of buy-in, because our people of our community love their animals, but they're very, very low-resourced. We're the poorest congressional district in the United States. Sorry to be, to break the bad news to you. So, so much of this is really oriented around the, you know, us closing that gap, but there aren't enough government resources or tax dollars. We can't do it without you. But I really think we could develop and implement a really, really cutting-edge, with your passion and this what I see here, I just, I'm so grateful for you. Sorry to intervene, but please, come forward. I want to hear from you. Just a thought. So I just want you to get with my staff.
My name is Sandy Giorlani.
Hi, Sandy.
And before I start, I am a part of Bakersfield Strays and Friends of Abandoned Dogs. I feed, rescue, trap, network, foster, what else do I do?
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm not the only one in this room. There's a bunch of people that do the same thing. And we have prepared a documentary for you. The thing is, when we tried to actually submit it on your website, on the Kern County Board of Supervisor website, we kept getting error. So if you don't mind, if I can approach to the clerk and to provide flash drivers. So, it's a 17-minute documentary talking about the situation in the county.
You had said a moment ago outside of the mic, is a 17-minute documentary?
A documentary about the situation in Kern County. It's very graphic. I'm warning you. But you will see what we see in the field on a daily basis when we do feed, okay? Thank you. Thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
Sandy, what is your last name?
I'm going to spell it for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I hear a little accent, yeah.
I'm from France.
Oh, wow.
I had a good idea to marry a guy from Bakersfield.
Oh, I love it. So you say Chris Parlier, just fine.
Monsieur Parlier, yes.
Oh, my goodness. Wow, fancy.
So it's G- So, it's G.I.U.R.L.A.N.I. Okay. I'm sorry if I mispronounced some words, even though I've been living in this county for thirty-two years. I didn't lose my accent.
It's beautiful.
Thank you. As residents of Bakersfield, California and Kern County, we are calling for critical changes to protect dogs from abandonment, neglect, abuse, and exploitation from breeding or malicious purposes. We elected you as our representative because at one point, we believed in your ability to implement these vital changes. While we, as dedicated volunteers, work relentlessly to address these issues at our own expense, our resources are dwindling, and we are feeling the strain mentally, physically, and financially. We are increasingly frustrated with having to take some of your responsibilities. And we need your leadership, please, to create meaningful changes for the dogs in the community. The previous speakers have highlighted the urgent need for change to support the voiceless animal in our community. We must enforce existing laws more strictly, because they are not enforced, and address the pressing requirement for a new shelter, like Fiona mentioned, as our county continues to expand more and more. The current situation is horrible. I cannot even describe it, with some areas resembling a third-world country. And I traveled around the world, and I can tell you what a third-world country looks like, overrun by abandoned and deceased dog decomposing on the side of the street. Immediate action is essential to tackle this arduous crisis and provide relief to the suffering animal. We're dedicated to driving significant change and will maintain a regular presence at your meetings, not to bother you, but to ensure you to fulfill the duties for which you were elected for. On behalf of everyone gathered here supporting our cause, we sincerely appreciate your attention today. Your willingness to listen and to offer a change means a great deed to us. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Chris Parlier. Oh, I'm so sorry. Forgive me. Supervisor Peters first, then Supervisor Polier? Ah, got it. Excellent. I'm trying.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. I just wanted to say, I hear what you guys are saying a hundred percent. But I also wanted to share a little bit just about our Animal Services Department. There are some great people over there. They're working hard. They're trying to do their best, and they've got their hands full. This is the second year in a row that we've taken over ten thousand dogs, which is a lot more than we were designed for. They still have an over an eighty percent rate of being able to save those dogs. But there's a lot of issues that, not just here, but I mean, around the country. You know, not having access to veterinarians. There's a big shortage of veterinarians. Fortunately, we have a lot of great volunteers like yourself. I see Robbie Miller over here from Strength of Shadow in Kern River Valley, folks that do a lot of great work for animals in our community. And I know that county staff is working on getting a new shelter opened, which is going to expand our capacity, which is going to be a huge deal. I know it's greatly needed. One thing that I might suggest would be something somewhat helpful would be, we do an Around Kern County segment usually, and maybe we could talk a little bit just about what services are available for animals in one of these upcoming segments, and point people to those resources, and maybe even talk about what penalties there are for people that are abandoning dogs and that type of thing. Would love to get your feedback and coordinate on that. But I appreciate you being down here, and I just wanted to share my thoughts on it.
Thank you Supervisor Peters. Supervisor Parlier?
Well, it's an honor to serve on the Kern County Animal Services Commission. And recently in Roseman, really within the last week, we had a mobile clinic from the county out doing spay and neuter services. Another one's going to be out there soon, too. But I'm going to ask staff if Nick could come before the board and just give an update and a presentation, where we're at. We're heading into budget season. I know we're doing a new facility, but just kind of get a three-sixty view of what their services are and what their needs are. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parlier. Okay, moving on. Additional comment from the public? Now is the time.
Hello, Michelle Peters. It's been a while since I've been up here. And I don't like to be overly critical over the years of my time in rescue and getting to know Nick, county, and Matt, city, and having a different perspective. I do like to say to anyone in this room who doesn't know what no kill really is, you know, when a shelter reaches a ninety percent save rate, and that they only euthanize ten percent of the animals, that ten percent is allotted for dogs that cannot be saved. So, when we reached ninety percent saves during COVID times, we weren't picking up animals. So, I know it's a win, but when you're out here being an animal rescue person, and you claim, oh, we reached no kill, that's, it's a... Do you know what I'm saying? When animal control is not picking up animals, that's why they're not euthanizing them. And I know Nick and I've had this discussion. Don't want to be too critical about it, but it's hard to stomach in those moments, because we're out, and I don't do that kind of stuff anymore, but we're out there, and it feels slappy. You know what I mean? It's a different perspective when you know that the animal control wasn't picking up animals to reach no kill. We're not supposed to be euthanizing for space, no matter what percentage we reach. And I just wanted to make that clear to people in the audience who don't really know what that means.
Okay.
And since I'm up here, 2019, I sat on a subcommittee to go over the ordinance, an ordinance review. 2020 came, and that got put on pause. And I know that, I think, those ordinances are still in your hands, and I don't know if that's still something that you guys are considering moving forward with. I know City ended up doing it. So, I'm hoping that county puts it back, you know, into motion, make sure that we can get these ordinances pushed through, so animal control has a little bit more teeth when it comes to enforcing animal care laws.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi. Thank you for listening. I'm Debbie Cianca-Meir. I'm from Tehachapi. And I'm from Have a Heart Humane Society. And I just wanted to speak about spay-neuter, because that's our focus. Because we think that that is going to somehow help the problem.
Not somehow. It's directly correlated, and it works.
Yep. Okay. We spend of our own, we have a store that supports what we want to do, and we spend ninety-five-hundred dollars a month to spay-neuter forty-two to sixty animals every month on the snip bus. It is not, it's something that we strive to do. We do our best. I don't know how long that's going to be possible. Ninety-five-hundred dollars is a lot of money. It means that the people who come to spay-neuter their animals pay twenty dollars, which is why it works. We have waiting lists. We have people that come and stand there in the mornings, waiting for people to cancel and not show up. And this is just Tehachapi, which is very small compared to these people who are here from Bakersfield, which have much larger numbers. So, I'm just begging you to please look into spay-neuter. Thank you.
Ma'am, you will never find a body, or you will not find a body in California that is more committed to spay-neuter than this body. We have been over the top about supporting it. Now, I understand that we need to get to better progress, and that we have, we've got to get back to where we were. But any suggestion that this body is not committed to it is, it's a little personal, because we really care about this. We took four years to find a veterinarian. You cannot find veterinarians to come to Kern County and do this job in any reasonable timeframe. I mean, it has been tragic. The amount of resources that have been poured in to mobile spay and neuter by my colleagues for the last decade has offended a lot of people in the community who would like to see that go to house people, or other things that they feel are more prioritized. So, I love your passion. We will absolutely devote, create a plan together, because we've already done it. We're just going to do the same thing, except your participation is so critical. But I assure you, you know, you are not going to find the most sympathetic ears from this body about our devotion to this topic. And I say that with all due respect. These, we love dogs in Kern County. We love our horses. We love our animals. And we are overwhelmed, overwhelmed. So, what we need, as Fiona said earlier, collaboration, that's the key. I will be your partner and your leader, I mean, your fierce cheerleader, I promise you. But we care. Thank you. Anybody else? Please, come on down. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Diana Freeling.
Hi, Dana.
From Rosemond.
Hi.
And I've heard a lot of people talking about bigger facilities, facilities. You closed our facility, the only facility we had at that end in Mojave. And when you did, you left a lot of people unable to retrieve their dogs. There's a lot of people that are really low-income. It doesn't mean they don't love their pets. But if a pet gets picked up and brought to Bakersfield, those people can't get here to retrieve their dogs. I've driven people here for that very purpose. And so, it's really, it's really hard. We need a facility there. A lot of the dogs that get picked up get taken to Lancaster. And that's a really high-kill shelter. I was at Lancaster when they had the fire at Lake Hughes. And when I walked through, they had one whole kennel empty. Well, they put all those dogs down to make room for the evacuated dogs. And that's what happened. So, if your dog gets picked up, I've had a dog picked up on Tehachapi Willow Springs and taken to Lancaster. And it happened to be a really valuable dog that was headed for Alaska, and he's there now. But fortunately, somebody knew and recognized and contacted me. But it happens all the time. Right now, there's an army of people in our area that are carrying water and bowls and dog food, because it's about to get hot. And dogs are dumped all the time. I personally have gone on hikes and found a dead mother dog and puppies, and that's horrific, and a horrific way to die. We need a place for them to be taken, that our people can retrieve them, and we don't have that. And we haven't had that for a long time. If we call animal control, it takes forever. I think we have one officer in Tehachapi. Our end of the county is not serviced. And it's not fair, because we're all taxed. So, I hope you'll consider, Mojave was a little tiny place, but it was a place. It was something we had, and it was at the airport. I hope you consider maybe doing that again, so that we do have at least a facility to go look for our dogs before we look in the street and in the desert.
What a great idea.
We have dogs dumped, so many dogs dumped in the desert. People dump them at my ranch all the time, and it's really hard, and you can't, you can't save them all, I know that. But we should be trying a hell of a lot harder at that end of the county than we are right now.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amazing how much we love our animals, huh? It really is. They've transformed, I mean, I prefer them over people every day of the year, and twice on Sunday, you know?
Hi Supervisors. I'm Robbie Miller. I want to thank you guys for your dedication to spay and neuter. It is working. I want to thank all you guys out there for doing the hard work. It's hard stuff. The odds are against us. Our community is constantly growing. We have a lack of resources from just regular vets, but don't give up. Nick's doing a good job at county. We can't fight each other. We got to find something in the middle and work together, and hopefully, we can talk to you guys and figure this out.
Absolutely. Thank you for your heart. How beautiful. No place like Kern County. I say it everywhere I go.
Joel McKay, RMAC from Roseman, lovely. Call it God's country up there.
Oh, yeah.
So, I wanted to thank the board and Supervisor Parlier. Nick was at an event along with the supervisor a couple of weeks ago. And I said, hey, can we get a snip van out in Roseman? He said, yeah, I'll work on some dates. I think a few days later, he goes, I had a last-minute cancellation. Let's see what we can do. Within an hour, it was filled.
Oh, my goodness.
We had fifty animals snipped a couple of weeks ago. We got another date for end of May. Within an hour of posting it, it was filled.
I know what you mean.
So, there is a great need in the rural communities for the snip. And I want to thank you for allocating those funds to us out there in the rural community.
Thank you so much. It is the collaboration that works. It's humane. It is, it's just so righteous. And there's other things, of course, that we've got to move, but that one is so, it's so critical on the numbers. And I am really eager to meet with you all and share our stories of our little friends, that how completely unique every single one of them is. They're, the treats they like, the time they're up in the morning, who, you know, which family member they want more love from than others. I mean, this can get complicated, right? They are completely unique, incredible souls that deserve our best. I'm with you. I promise you, this board cares, too. I mean, they're not as emotional up here as I am, which is fine. But I know that they care about this. I've seen it in their actions through the years. And we, you know, we've just, after COVID, we just sort of lost, you know, we lost some of our momentum. But the body of our animal services, I think, is just stunning. They love these animals. They sob in my office on a regular basis. It is, this is hard stuff. But we are committed, and I'm eager to connect with you, because I think there's magic here. And it really, sincerely, thank you for your passion. Anyone else in, would like to provide public comment? Now is the time to do so. Please come on down. If you could, if we have a line of people, who else would like to speak right now, public comment? Okay. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Stephen Clark. I'm from Oildale.
Hi, Stephen.
So, you say COVID. A few points I heard that brought up. One said kennel cough. My first rescue dog was labeled as a pit bull mix. Turns out, he's a Catahoula leopard dog. Vet told me that.
Wow.
He, I was told I was the last call. I didn't know what that was. I picked him up in East Bakersfield. They said he'd been hanging around the job site, almost getting hit by cars on Niles. So, I built a rig. I roped him. I take him to the county. They call me a few days later. Hey, that dog you dropped off has kennel cough. He's going to be euthanized tonight. Years ago, I used to breed pit bull terriers. When I couldn't find them good homes, I stopped. I ended up with my entire last litter. So, I had seven elderly dogs that were nine years old. So, I'm thinking, am I really going to bring in a rescue? Well, I felt obligated, so I went and got him on the basis of foster, right? He didn't have kennel cough. I took him to my own vet. This dog still hacks to this day. I've had him since April nineteenth, 2019. He's still just hacks, 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 right? It's just something he does. Don't know. Did all the blood work, whatever, but he didn't have kennel cough. Okay, that's the point. But I picked him up in the back of animal control, right next to the, like, kill room, you can call it. He's in the last cage before they take him in and they kill him. So, I pick dogs up all the time. I take them down. If they're aggressive, dirty, too much work, because I don't got the time to do it, I don't take it. I took him home. I built another kennel. My other dogs have died over the last few years. He was my only dog since 2020, right? So, I had him for about a year. Those elderly dogs went from lymphoma to, you know, seizures, whatever, right? It happens. COVID comes around. My birthday, I go to get a pizza from Santa Barbara Pizza, December thirty-first, 2021. There's a puppy, right? Looks like he's been smacked by a car. He could fit in both my hands. He's a brindle something. Can't tell when they're little sometimes. And it looks like he's rolled in gear oil. And you know what gear oil is, right? Rear-end oil. That is real heavy stuff, and like, he's been powdered in dirt, or you can smell gear oil. It smells different than every other oil. The county COVID, during COVID, their hotline says that they are not accepting dogs, only sick or injured cats. That was what I heard over and over and over on the voicemail, the automated thing, all during COVID. They didn't accept dogs. They weren't taking dogs, sick and injured cats. So, I ended up with that dog, too.
Okay.
So, I take care of him.
I need you to wrap up, sir.
Now, the animal abuse. The influx of dogs is all the people home. They all want to get a dog to hang out with. It's a lot of work. The world starts going again. We're dumping dogs.
You got to wrap up, sir.
Something's got to be done.
Yeah, I know.
Something's got to change.
Hundred percent.
Okay?
Thank you.
It just has to change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more action on public, I look forward to connecting with you. Please, please talk to Christian and my staff, and we'll get on calendar within the next couple of weeks, and we'll get the ball rolling. Appreciate your passion. Thank you. Would any of my colleagues like to weigh in further?
I want to hear your saying. Don't you have a saying about dogs? Don't tell your secrets?
Oh, gosh.
Let me tell you, my, I love dogs. Dogs changed my life. They legitimately changed my life. They've made me a better human being, and the joy I receive from them is just immeasurable. But, you know, loving dogs was a later thing in my life. I hated them as kids. I was terrified. I almost got a dog bite as a kid on my face, so I had a weird thing about it. But then completely fell in love, because my husband loves dogs. I completely fell in love with them. Completely changed my life, and so I became... Completely changed my life, and so I became enamored with reading about them and what others have said about them. And so I have a great doggy quotes. Thank you, Jeff. And my all-time favorite, I think it's Louis VII, or don't quote me, he says, "Dogs, we love them because they know, but do not tell." I feel like if we could only figure out how to be more like them, we'd be better friends, better partners, but we would just take over the world if we could just be... Another one of my favorites is, it was a major too, and he said, "Dogs are the best thing about human beings." Isn't that just so spot on? I mean, they actually have integrity and character. I mean, they're just like, we have a lot to learn from them, and we owe them, we owe them. They're our closest domesticated animal. They can read our emotional intelligence. They're just, they're really special. And you are so special to be here and take this time and put pictures up and put them to come here and say, this actually says something about our humanity. It actually says something about us too. And those are tough things, but I appreciate you. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we're going to move on away from our public presentations to board member announcements or reports. Gentlemen? Okay. Phil, if you guys want to exit now, it's perfectly okay. Thank you again for being here. Thank you for what you do. I feel hopeful about the future because of you. Thank you. Let me give them just a moment, Kathy, to clear the chambers. Wow, that's a big crowd. It's people power right there. Yeah, no kidding. I'll have to meet on the third floor. Start it. Look at this. This is real. That's not phony, Kathy Kraus. That's real. Okay, item number six, excuse me, item number eight. Under Planning and Natural Resources Department, we see Director Lorelei Oviat is ready to provide us a presentation. This is a request of Airstar Properties LLC by DeWalt Corporation for a zone change. And we're about to get all the juicy details. Director Oviat, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Craig Murphy, Assistant Director, will present this particular item.
Good afternoon, members of the board. The project before you today includes a proposed change in zone classification on an approximately nine-acre parcel that's located near the corner of Hegeman Road and Jueta Avenue. These roadways separate unincorporated Kern County, which is located in the southeast corner of this intersection, and the city of Bakersfield, which is surrounding the properties to the north and the west. As mentioned, the applicant for this project is Airstar Properties LLC by DeWalt Corporation. In terms of land use, the site is currently split designated. The northern portion of the site is designated Low-Medium Density Residential by the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan and has an existing zone classification of a State 10-acre minimum RS. However, there is an R1 zone classification that is currently in suspense. The southern portion of the project site is also designated Suburban Residential by the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan and has an existing zone classification of a State Residential 10-acre minimum. However, there is an Estate Residential 1/4-acre Minimum Lot Size in suspense. In short, the property is designated for single-family residential use with the northern portion consisting of typical 6,000-square-foot lots and the southern portion consisting of approximately 1/4-acre residential lots. At this time, there is no residential development that could occur to implement this R1 and Estate 1/4-acre Zone Classification until a subdivision map is processed and approved for the project site. The split designation is a result of action taken by the Board of Supervisors in 2007 and was intended to pair similar 1/4-acre residential lot sizes to the residential properties that can be found to the south of the project site. The specific request before you today is a change in zone classification for the northern portion of the site to R2. The R2 classification is our Medium Density Residential Zone Classification. And the southern portion of the project site, the zone classification would remain Estate Residential with that minimum 1/4-acre lot size. At this time, there is no proposed development. However, the project applicant has indicated to staff that they would like to pursue development of the northern portion of the site into multiple duplex units and the southern portion of the site into possibly additional 1/4-acre residential lots. It's important to note that usually, when staff receives an application to change the underlying zone classification from single-family residential to medium-density residential, it typically results in an increase in the density. That is not the case for this particular project. The applicant did not include a request to amend the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan land use designations. So for this case, while the use and the type of residential development could change, the overall maximum density of 10 dwelling units per net acre would remain the same. Properties surrounding the project site include a mix of single-family and multifamily and rural residential development. The lots to the south are generally 1/4-acre in size. The lot just north and to the east are rural residential properties. And then properties directly west and north are single-family residential. And then Kitty Corner, which you can't quite see it on this particular map, but Kitty Corner of this intersection is a large apartment complex that is currently in place as well. During the course of processing this request, staff received three comment letters in opposition to this project. One of the letters has been provided to your board today. In addition, two surrounding property owners provided testimony in opposition to the project at the Planning Commission hearing. The comments in opposition express concerns regarding impacts the project may have as they specifically relate to the existing character of the neighborhood, impacts to property values, increased traffic and density, and overall impacts to the adjacent residential communities. Responses to these concerns have been outlined in your board's staff report on page five. However, I'd like to take this opportunity to provide an overview in terms of how staff has addressed these concerns as they relate to this particular request. Regarding impacts to the existing character of the neighborhood, staff does note that the southern portion of the project site would remain Estate residentially with that minimum 1/4-acre lot size, thus maintaining that direction provided by the Board of Supervisors in 2007. While the site directly adjacent to the single-family development, there is a large apartment complex located to the northwest corner of Hegeman and Jueta, opposite of this corner. The site is approximately eight acres in size, which is similar to this nine-acre project site, and directly about similar, 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 single-family residential lots. While development of the project site into residential duplex units or any other form of multifamily residential development does not necessarily match the adjacent single-family residential properties to the west and the south, that does not mean that those uses aren't compatible. The county has adopted specific development standards to ensure this compatibility, and some of those development standards include the fact that any future multifamily residential development that consists of three or more units is required to construct a six-foot block wall when it is located adjacent to any residential properties, Zoned R1, E1/4, E1/2, or E1. When the adjacent property is zoned for residential use, all windows above the first story and within 75 feet shall contain glass that is opaque or translucent or shall be screened in a manner approved by the planning director. Additionally, no balconies are permitted within that 75-foot buffer zone. All lighting, just as any other project, must adhere to dark sky principles outlined within our zoning ordinance. And at least 5% of the project site must meet our landscaping requirements. Regarding impacts to property values, the only thing I can say for this particular project at this time is it is speculative concern and assumption. There is no information that's provided to staff that I could point to in this record that shows the development of this project as proposed by the applicant in accordance with the zoning ordinance would specifically result in any lower property values to any of those adjacent residential properties. Regarding housing density and traffic, as I mentioned before, again, for this particular case, the density will not change when compared to the existing land use designations that are currently in place. Only the types of housing that would permit on-site would be subject to those changes. A trip generation analysis was conducted for this project, assuming a 52-unit multifamily development, and it was determined that a formal traffic study was not required as the overall threshold of 50 a.m. or p.m. peak hour trips would not be exceeded. The project site itself is located within a Type A improvement area, meaning that when developed, not only would the project applicant be required to pay appropriate traffic impact fees, but they would be required to dedicate and construct Jueta Avenue along the project frontage. Jueta Avenue specifically is within the jurisdiction of the city of Bakersfield. The city of Bakersfield has provided a comment to staff indicating that they concur with the determination that a traffic study was not required and that no other traffic measures would be required for this project other than the implementation of those existing development standards I mentioned before. Regarding access to the project site, residents have expressed concern to staff as it pertains to Eden Street, which is located at the southern boundary of the project site. The use of Eden Street was also a concern raised by residents back in 2007 when the existing land use designations were established. In response to this comment and concern, staff notes that there is no site plan before your board for consideration today. And if the zone change is approved, buildout of that northern R2 zone property would not require any further public hearings. The project applicant has indicated to staff that they intend to take access from Jueta, specifically, I believe, right around Genley Avenue. And this statement was further provided publicly by the applicant's team during the Planning Commission hearing. Given the actions before your board today, there is no pathway for staff to include a requirement or a standard condition of approval that access must be taken from Jueta Avenue. However, development of the southern portion of the project site would be subject to a future land division map and consideration in a public hearing. And development of the northern portion of the project site will require submittal of a site plan by review, full review by staff before any building or grading permits could be issued. Future development will also be required to provide appropriate will serve letters from both Vaughn Water Company and the city of Bakersfield for sewer service. And at the time building permits is submitted, the project applicant will also be required to pay all appropriate school and park fees. Finally, all drainage will be required to be retained on-site. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and taken into account previous actions by your board to ensure compatibility with the adjacent residential land uses. And staff is recommending approval of the request for the following reasons. First, development of new housing and new housing opportunities has been a center discussion topic for the better part of two years now. And while the traditional single-family home is still a staple in a housing development, non-traditional residential uses such as duplex communities are gaining in popularity due to the ever-changing needs of county residents and the overall costs associated with housing development in general. This specific request would allow for a varied housing type that would be available to residents living in the west side of Metropolitan Bakersfield. And while rural residential development still exists to the east, the project site itself is vacant. It's a remnant piece of property that has been surrounded by more intense development to the northwest and to the south. Again, that includes single-family residences and an apartment complex. It is staff's opinion that through the implementation of the existing development standards, this project site would be compatible to those adjacent uses. Additionally, the lack of development at this particular corner of Hegeman and Jueta has further resulted in roadways that have not been fully built out to their full capacity and requirements. Specifically, the Hegeman Road drops down to one lane as it goes across this intersection. And Jueta Avenue is one lane traveling north as it goes, as it approaches this intersection. Implementation of this project would ensure that we address that concern as a lot of Jueta Avenue would be reconstructed and expanded as a result of the improvements required to facilitate this development. The project was considered by the Planning Commission at their February 13th, 2025 hearing. Staff presented the proposal to the commission for consideration. And during public testimony, Mr. Jeff Gutierrez of DeWalt Corporation spoke in favor of the project. And as I mentioned, we had two adjacent residential neighbors who spoke in opposition, citing the concerns that I have discussed before. Mr. Brian Helpt with ASU Commercial provided comments that day indicating that they are working with the project applicant regarding the final design of the site. And he spoke in support of the request. Mr. Helpt further indicated that the use of Eden Street will not be included in the project's final site design. After closure of the public testimony, Commissioner Oliver expressed concern regarding the project and its compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. And after discussion amongst the commission, a motion was made by Commissioner Skidmore to approve the project as recommended by staff. By a vote of three to one, with Commissioner Oliver voting no and Commissioner Ashley absent, the Planning Commission recommended your board approve the requested change in zone classification as recommended by staff. The recommendation that is being presented to you today is to adopt a resolution, recommend findings, and enact ordinance approving the zone change as requested. That completes staff's presentation, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your excellent presentation, very thorough, user-friendly. Thank you. Director Oviat, did you want to add anything before? Thank you. Are there members of the public who would like to weigh in on this? I have a suspicion there is. Come on down. Can I just get a sense of how many people want to speak on this matter? Okay, we got here, here. Okay, not too many. We do never discourage conversation input. I promise you, I just want to get a sense as I'm managing the meeting. So, good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Welcome, board. David Shear, I have property on the southern west corner there.
Okay.
Okay. Back, he mentioned back in 2007, when we went through planning then, that was going to be all half-acre estate lots across that southern wall. The rest of that zoning was going to be quarter-acre lots, okay?
Okay.
Block wall all the way around it. And again, nothing going through Eden Street. And they were going to actually not incorporate Genley Avenue to come directly into that subdivision there. They were going to move it down or something. My concerns are also is that sump that they're on their housing plan. He didn't bring that up and show you, but their sump is going to be adjoining to the sump that's directly behind my house. That already is, you know, it's a mosquito haven. It's got rodents in there. Another sump in there is going to drop property values. I know it does because it drops my value of my house when you have appraisals done on it. Oh, you got a sump there that's going to drop that. Another sump will drop that.
I saw your note, yes.
Okay. And actually, they get infested with eucalyptus trees. They keep growing. I know the sump behind me. The county won't do anything with that sump. They're an invasive tree, and they just still growing and taking over the whole sump. You can't get them taken out. Can't get them to do anything with that because that sump back at that time was the property owners. They own that sump, so they won't even let them hardly go in there and do anything. Also, with the schools, our schools are overcrowded right there right now. There's not room for another mobile school building in there for that many houses to go in. When we did this before, I think there would have been a half as many houses in that nine acres that's there. Now you're doubling that, tripling that with duplexes, triplexes that's going to go in there. So I think that you're going to have a bigger, larger impact than what they're saying there. You know, it's just going to put a lot more stress on everybody with that much people in the traffic going in and out there, right? You have 52 homes going in there, two cars per house. It's a lot more than what I think what the roads department decided was okay also.
Understood, understood.
Okay?
Okay.
So the main thing, like I said, is for our schools, that sump, and our previous zoning was a lot larger than that, and we shouldn't have to, you know, he's talking about the apartment across the street a lot. Let's talk about the rest of the neighborhood in Roseville. What about the people that, everybody wants a garden, everybody wants some chickens or some animals for 4H, you know, future farmers of America. We need some property that's like that. That's not half acre, not a half acre or three quarters of acre, five acres out in Roseville. People can't afford that, but they still can't get into half-acre and quarter-acre lots.
Sure.
Take that in consideration, please. Thank you, board.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your input. I think I saw one other speaker. Please come on down. State your name for the record. Good afternoon and welcome.
Madam Chair, Honorable Supervisors, I'm Jeff Gutierrez with DeWalt Corporation, here representing the applicant, Airstar Properties. We've read the staff report, and we're in agreement with the staff report. If I were going to mention anything else, I would just say that the density is not changing at this property. We're not asking for a general plan amendment. It's just a zone change. So I just wanted to make sure that that was stated clearly. I think Craig did a great job of presenting the staff's findings, so I'm available for any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Any other members of the public want to weigh in? Okay, we're going to close the public portion, return to the board. And I look to my colleagues for their brilliance and direction. Oh, I'm so sorry. We do have Supervisor Peters punched in, but first we'll go to Director Oviat, and then we'll return to you, Supervisor. Just a moment.
Thank you, Supervisor Peters through the chair. Just one clarification. This property is Zoned R1, 6,000-square-foot lots. There was a statement made that in 2007, and it had been zoned for E-quarter. It was not. The board approved it for R1 in the top and E-quarter at the bottom. And those were going to take effect when a track map was recorded. The E-quarter at the bottom would not change. In regards to the sump, Josh Champlin is here, can explain. We have no evidence that, quote, "The new sump would be next door to the sump behind his house." We have no evidence of that because it would not make sense to move a sump off this property onto another piece of property outside of the onto another piece of property outside of the tract. If you do have questions about the sump, Josh Champlin is prepared to explain. This is an unusual situation where it is an old drainage easement, not what we think of as a county sump. And there have been some issues with getting access to it because it's on private property. With that, Mr. Murphy or I are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Peters, your thoughts?
Thank you. To start with, I do have questions about the sump and like most things in District One, I understand this is an unusual situation, but I would like to hear your take on that, Director Champlin.
Joshua Champlin, Kern County Public Works Director. Supervisor, Supervisor Peters through the chair. I did learn about this sump rather recently and it is not what we do today, but it was, this is an older subdivision. Most of, most of the time when we do tracks now, we put the sumps adjacent to the roadway so that it's easy to maintain and get access to. It's come to my attention that many years ago, we had a very difficult time accessing this sump for maintenance. And at that time, it was recommended by council, county's council, that we just simply hold off on that. I'm prepared to re, you know, re-engage the property owner. It is a drainage easement and we would love to maintain it if we're allowed access in there. So, it's, it's my opinion and I will, you know, if your board sees fit, I will re-engage with the property owner with my team. And we will, you know, try to get access to their property and ultimately, it does constitute a health and safety issue. So, I would be prepared to, you know, open a code, code case on this property to force access into there so that we can maintain that if that's the board's opinion.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I'm so sorry, sir, the public portion is closed. I would, if Supervisor Peters wanted to entertain additional comment, we'd do that, but we'd just like to keep the rules consistent.
Yeah, I appreciate. I got a couple more points I want to hit and then I would ask the gentleman to come back up and share some thoughts, but I think that that's it for you, Director Champlin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Champlin.
Just because I don't speak the lingo, would you explain to me a little bit more just about what the zoning was? I saw State 10 in suspense and just a couple of things I didn't quite understand with that, how that works.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Chairman Peters, members of the board. So, in 2007, the project was designated, generally speaking, let's say for 10 acre lot sizes. That's why you can see the zone is existing E1 RS. There was a public hearing. We had an applicant at that time that wanted to propose changes to the land use designations that involved these properties and actually involve the property directly east. Ultimately, the board made those changes. However, Supervisor Watson at the time had made a recommendation that instead of making one large change, a whole bunch of different designations be approved at different locations of the property. And so, the general plan land use designations change immediately. So, the northern portion of the project site now has a designation of LMR, which is our low medium density residential. And the southern portion has a land use designation of SR, which is our suburban residential designation, which is what all those other designations are around the project site. What happens is the zoning does not change immediately. So, while the board, when they took those actions, they approved to have the R1 zoning in suspense, what that triggers is that the property is still, keeps its zoning, it's gonna be zoned R1 as soon as the property owner processes the residential tract map that is then considered. And then that change in zoning automatically is enacted. So, when the board took their action for these particular, this particular project site, the northern portion, which is approximately seven, seven and a half acres, they designated R1 zoning as soon as the tract map would be approved, which is a typical 10 dwelling units per net acre. And typically, those are done at 6,000 square foot lots. The northern portion of the property, which is the property that touches Mr. Shear's site, the board kept a designation of E1 Quarter. So, any development directly adjacent to Mr. Shear would be one quarter acre in size. So, in short, what the applicant is asking for now is technically, if they wanted to move forward and process tract maps, they could have 9,000 or 6,000 square foot lots on that seven and a half acres and quarter acre lots on that 1.9 acres and things along those lines. And the request before us today is to maintain that southern portion at quarter acre residential lot size, but change the zone classification to medium density for that northern seven and a half acres. But again, the reason, sorry, I know what your next question's gonna come, is how does that not result in a change in density? So, in metropolitan Bakersfield specifically, we have a provision that says if your, your R2 zone classification is consistent with LMR, provided you don't build a density greater than what the general plan currently allows. So, again, that's a provision that is in metro Bakersfield that is not necessarily in other places in the county. So, typically, when we get a request to change the zoning to R2, a lot of times it comes with a general plan amendment as well. My general plan is designated for 6,000 square foot lots. My zoning is designated for 6,000 square foot lots. I want to change them both to allow 16 units per acre. In this particular case, the applicant did not submit a request to change the general plan. So, our R2 zoning is consistent, provided when they go to build it, they can only build it at a density that the underlying general plan designation allows. And in this particular case, for these seven and a half acres or so, it only allows for 10 dwelling units per net acre. And so, that's what their request would have to be. Now, again, the type of housing could change. They could build a duplex in, in an R2 zone classification and things along those lines. So, the type of housing changes, but not the density.
Got it. Thank you. And I'm sure that's what you said earlier. I just didn't really understand, so I appreciate you reiterating that. And then my last question would be, I've heard from a couple residents near there some similar concerns that we heard today about particularly the school and the traffic and the impacts to that. And, and I live right, right near there. I'm not, not in that neighborhood, but I, but I see, you know, quite a bit of traffic impacts there. And so, I definitely understand it, but with this project, when the time comes to start that development, does that come back to the board? And would that be an opportunity for, you know, asking, you know, making sure that block wall is built or putting certain conditions on that? Or does this not come back to the board?
Supervisor Peters through the chair. With an R2 zone classification, they would be allowed to start implementing the project without having to come back to a public hearing for any final consideration. Now, that, the development standards that are in our ordinance specify what the development can and can't do and what it needs to look like when they come in for that site plan review. So, the northern seven and a half acres, while it wouldn't require a public hearing, they still would have to submit their site plan as part of their building and grading permits. And staff would then be going through all the development standards to ensure that it matches what our zoning ordinance currently says. Regarding a block wall, yes, this project, for that seven and a half acres, because it touches property that is zoned R1 or estate residential, will be required to put a six-foot block wall surrounding the multifamily development. The southern portion of the project site, again, it being designated E1 Quarter, for it to actually get built out into quarter acre lots, they would have to go through some sort of land require a hearing and, you know, ultimate consideration of the map to actually subdivide that portion of the project site.
Excuse me, you said land use hearing, correct? The mic cut out.
Sorry, land, land division action of some sort. So, it requires some sort of a public hearing for that aspect of it.
Thank you.
Okay, and then as far as, you know, we heard, there's a lot of property nearby that would be adjacent to this that has a lot of residential uses. And there's some horse training facilities, a lot of animals back there. That's one thing that I do see becoming a problem at some point. You know, we, we see a lot where people move into an area that already has existing uses nearby and then all of a sudden we get a bunch of complaints about the neighbors because there's chickens crowing in the morning or people are heading their horses. And I just want to make sure that we avoid a potential situation like that. That it's not gonna be anything conflicting with the existing use that the neighboring properties have.
Supervisor Peter through the chair. All of the surrounding property owners, which you can see have this RS combining zone district, that RS specifically expands the uses that they are allowed in terms of animals and that, and that aspect of it. The proposed project site that currently has that R1 zoning in suspense clearly does not include the RS as the RS wouldn't be appropriate for that. So, this project itself would not create any impacts to what the residents adjacent to this project site could use in terms of their animals and things along those lines. For anybody that would move into this site, they should be aware and our project applicant is here and yes, animals are allowed and all those properties directly south and east. And if a resident isn't interested in living next to that, then they should probably find a different piece of property that they would like to, to live at. But this would not change the ability for those residents to maintain their, their animals.
Understood. Thank you. And then just lastly, Madam Chair, if I could grant the indulgence just for a minute if Mr. Shear wants to come back up and, and address any final concerns.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good thing you came.
Yes, thank you, Board, again for letting me talk again.
Of course.
So, back to that sump. I'm not asking you to take my sump and move it over there. That sump is gonna stay there. So, the problem with it is what I was asking is you're putting additional sump so it's, it's additional hazard for mosquitoes and everything else like the county was saying. What I, the problem with my sump is, my house was there before any of that development was there. I've been there for 40 years, okay? And they built, when they built Poulsen Way that runs down to Eden over there, that was, that's done by planning and it's got a curb and gutter like it's supposed to and the drain goes all the way around the road and goes to the sump. My, my house and my property is lower than the street. I can't get my property to drain to the street gutter and run the water out. So, and when he did with planning for that to build, because Mr. Poulsen owned my house and he did that project. With the county at that time, they put a drain in my driveway. It runs under my property all the way out into the back of that sump right there and it would go down through three inch PVC, black PVC or four inch goes in there and it would drain onto a little piece of concrete like this. Well, it'd get plugged up every year with the dirt and the sand and, and the weeds growing. So, I would have to jump the fence and go clean it. So, my driveway would rain, uh, drain. I can remember getting six inches of water there, in there when the drain was plugged up. So, I'd have to jump the fence in the rain and go over there and clean that out. So, the, that landowner came over, he saw me one day cleaning that out and said, "What are you doing?" He ran me out of there. He said, "I can't come back." He went up there and cut my pipe, cut that drain pipe off and capped it. So, I had no driveway drain. So, when I went to county, county said, "Well, you know, there's nothing you can do, this, that, and the other. You're gonna have to put it, pump it out to the street." Is what I was told. So, I went in and I dug a six-foot, seven-foot dry well and put in there and I put a sump pump in there. And I have to, I said, "Well, can I run it over to this alley?" It's a public, it was an access to the back of my property, which used to have some water wells, a water well on it and some pressure tanks for the water company. And they said, "Yeah, you can drain it to there." So, I have out there, I have a dry well. I have to maintain this sump pump and pump the water off my property to get it off there when it rains. That's not right. You know, and, and he won't let, let, he won't let me in there. He won't let you guys go in there to maintain or do anything. So, how can we resolve that problem?
If, if I could, maybe offline, I could talk with Josh Champlin, who's our Director of Public Works, so we can connect you guys and see if we can get something figured out that'll take care of that issue.
No, I appreciate that. You know, my thought, something like this, okay, if you guys can't resolve something like that, I'm close enough to where that other property is at, where you're gonna build a sump. Maybe the line could go that way. I don't know, but it'd be something to address and, and, and I'd like to be notified on the next hearing for the block wall or the half acre or quarter acre estate lots that are gonna be on the south side of that property, to see what's up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You remind me why fences make good neighbors.
Yes, and that's, that is another thing about that.
Sturdy ones!
So, another thing about that, my property being so low right now, with my back patio and I'm standing on my concrete, I can look over my six-foot fence and see the site over there. So, if they go over and do like they normally do and they, they take the roads, the material from the roads and build the house pads up because the low, make the streets lower for drainage, I'm gonna see right into there or they're gonna look right into my property.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's.
It's not gonna work very well, you know?
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you. And I'd like the board and everybody to look at that project for, and there is a street map out that he didn't show that's out and I have a picture of that also. Do you have that, sir? The, the street map of that project? I can show that?
Supervisor Peters?
I'm not sure how to proceed on this one.
Yeah, I know. I'm a little, I'm a little confused too.
Supervisor Peters, I'm not sure if you would like him to show this map. We can show this map. I'm not sure what we're looking at. What, what is the issue that you would like to address?
Counsel, Senate, to me.
If this is how the project's gonna be built, perhaps you should speak offline with the engineer, Jeff Cataras, who can adequately talk about the issues of, you know, how your house is built and how that would work. At this stage, your board has no way to condition this project for any of the other things that are being brought forward. This is a zone change.
I appreciate it. We'll, we'll connect offline and, and we'll take a look at that and talk about the next steps.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Board.
Appreciate you very much, sir. Thank you for being here and providing the context and, and do it so respectfully. We appreciate it. Gentlemen, anything, Supervisor Peters, you good? Okay, any other members of the public? Okay, Supervisor Parlier.
No, I'm just clearing my screen.
See, I see. Okay, so it looks like we are at a moment for action then. I think we've had a robust conversation. I really appreciate all the input. I appreciate Mr. Gutierrez who has been here and listened in good faith. And we'll work with the county to help improve always, every project that we ask the public to endure and be a part of. We, we should always be willing to improve. Anybody?
I'll, I'll move staff's recommendation.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion. In a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All eyes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have item number 10, which is also under planning in Natural Resources Department. It is a request for conditional position of support for the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center project, approximately 60 acres located north of Dawn Road and between State Route 14 and Sierra Highway. Craig, is this your matter? Oh, just Craig, excellent presentation. Thank you so much. That was just excellent. Director Oviat, your thoughts?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a project that is before you. You've had these kinds of projects before, which is actually being processed by the California Energy Commission. So, as noted, this is four miles north of Rosamond, immediately north of Dawn Road. It's between State Highway 14 and Sierra Highway. It is a 500 megawatt, 4,000 megawatt hour advanced compression air energy storage facility. Because it is a thermal plant and it is over 50 megawatts, the California Energy Commission is the lead and can override our zoning and other requirements that we have. However, with our long history of processing these kinds of projects, we've processed at least five of these types of projects with the California Energy Commission. They wish to work cooperatively with local governments and understand the concerns and recommendations of the local agencies. And so, I'd like to also acknowledge my Division Chief, Katerina Slaton, who has been working proactively with the California Energy Commission and the applicant on this project. This project, this is a rendering. This is a compressed air project. I'm being simplistic. I've put bare details into the first page of this report to give you an overview of the mechanics of this. But it stores energy from renewable sources like solar and wind during off-peak hours and releases it during peak demand, providing electricity for up to eight hours. The majority of the lithium batteries that we have here keep the lights on in California, but they normally only can store from four to six hours. So, this is long-term duration. It's not dependent on, it's dependent on compressed air and heat. And it's expected to power 400,000 homes for eight hours. It'll be one of the largest long-duration energy storage projects in the world. So, as noted, it is an unusual type of operation. The compressed air cavern is 3,000 feet deep and the size of a football field. And it will take them three to four years to actually take the rock out, working around the clock and taking that rock out. and taking that rock out to create this cavern. It will also require 19 miles of transmission lines, these are very, very large transmission lines, to the Whirlwind Substation, which is one of our two existing substations in Eastern Kern in Willow Springs. A full description of the project and the CC docket, there is a link in the staff report. So, the primary concern of this project, when we coordinated with other departments, which is the directive that the Planning Department be a coordinating body, is with the two issues. One is the transport of the rock, where is it going? That's a lot of heavy trucks on our rural roads in that area. And second, the ability of the Fire Department to rescue anyone who actually is injured or if there's an accident in that 3,000-foot cavern. So, in consultation with the Fire Department, we have determined that an urban search and rescue vehicle, we only have one, and it's 80 miles away, one way, at Panama Lane. So, we, in consultation with the California Energy Commission at their suggestion, we gave them a long list of conditions that we would normally put on a conditional use permit. But we have honed this down to seven measures that we would like your board to let the California Energy Commission know that these are the things that we need to actually make sure this project is safe for the surrounding communities. It starts with the acquisition of an urban search and rescue vehicle. It's $1.9 million that the applicant would pay, as other applicants have. It takes a year to build it, and that would then be located in Eastern Kern. This could also support mining rescues and other sorts of rescues that are hampered by this. There will be at least up to 700 people working on this site. That is a lot of opportunity for something to go wrong for our first responders. Fortunately, this project will be paying full taxes on their $2 billion investment, and there is not. But until they start paying taxes, we don't have enough money to staff it. So, the second request is yearly funding of $2.4 million for staffing until the project construction is complete, then as soon as property taxes and the fire fund is assessed, that funding would stop. And then the staffing for this urban search and rescue would be paid for by those property taxes as well as other projects. We have an expansion of some mines and other sorts of things that would also benefit from this urban search and rescue vehicle. Those would be for the Fire Department. And then to address the roads, we would have dedication and improvement of the access roads. We would evaluate the roads for this round-the-clock hauling of 1.6 million cubic yards of crushed rock that will take three or four years on these roads. And we would make sure that we have Dawn Road and Bacchus Road continually maintained and rebuilt if necessary. This is a process we have used with wind specifically and other solar projects where we videotape the roads, we take, we take evaluation of the roads, and we actually make sure that they're kept in good repair at the applicant's expense during the operation. I'll jump down to six and seven. These are standard requirements that, that your board has put on all your projects, which is that all the sales tax for the project components be at the address in the unincorporated Kern County, so that you would receive the benefits of the sales tax and encouragement of 50% local hire. Item number five, this 19 miles of transmission lines, these are very large transmission lines, they are not intertie connection lines, which are much smaller. Portions of them would be down Tropical Road, which is where our middle school is in Rosamond, and then also down Rosamond Boulevard. As many of you know, Rosamond Boulevard is the main thoroughfare from downtown Rosamond all the way out to 200th Street with extensive miles upon miles of solar and wind, as well as Willow Springs Raceway. The concern is, is that the transmission construction, and the only opposition we've gotten to this were a few Rosamond residents who came and spoke at the California Energy Commission workshop, and were concerned about that construction. We believe that we would request that we not close that road. Normally, when they do these big transmission lines, they request to close the roads completely. We are asking that, that your boards support a condition to the Energy Commission, that it never be delayed more than 10 minutes, that they do traffic control with laneage, and most importantly, because of Willow Springs Raceway, that it not be stopped on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, when those are the areas where, you know, people are going back and forth to church, going back and forth on Rosamond Boulevard, and closing those roads at that time would mean very difficult. They would have to go all the way down to Avenue A. It could add 20, 25, 30 minutes to their, their movements around Rosamond. We've reviewed all of these with the applicant. The applicant is here today, and they have, they have indicated that they will accept these and they support these conditions to the California Energy Commission. As a reminder, the California Energy Commission staff is doing a preliminary assessment that's not finished. We believe that your boards, with a chair letter, letting them know that you support this project, which is important to their hearing officers, if they put these conditions in, we believe that this will put these conditions over the line and have the staff put them in the preliminary assessment to make their recommendation to the hearing officers. I'd like to note that you've received many letters in support today. I'll just go over the list. The Antelope Valley Economic Development and Growth Enterprise, the Greater Vickersfield Chamber, the California City Chamber of Commerce, Sierra Coso Community College, the Antelope Valley College, Ready Mix Concrete Asphalt and Aggregates, the Antelope Valley East Kern Water District, the Mojave Chamber of Commerce, and there may be others here who want to speak today. We believe this project, as conditioned, will be an asset to Eastern Kern. These are conditions that we would have recommended if this was a conditional use permit within a full environmental impact report. I personally know that the hearing officers for the California Energy Commission take the comments from the Board of Supervisors very seriously and are very interested in hearing what would make this project work better for our local communities. With that, the applicant is here, as well as, I believe, others who wish to speak. And that completes my presentation. Your recommendation is to adopt a conditional position of support and authorize the chair to sign a letter to the California Energy Commission.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Okay, now's the time for people who are directly affected stakeholders to come down and, you know, put your stamp on this remarkable process and what an incredible project, my goodness. It's humbling.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Kurt Hildebrand, Senior Vice President with Hydrostore, and I just want to thank Lorelei and the Planning Department staff for all their hard work getting us to this point today. Lorelei, I do have a quick update for you. The PSA was published about 14 minutes ago. Our preliminary staff assessment by the California Energy Commission was due tomorrow. They actually filed it today. I believe it was 1,300 pages. So, we are making progress on that front. I do also want to confirm that Hydrostore has worked closely with Lorelei and the Planning Department on these conditions. We are agreeable to them, and we're excited to move this project forward. Latest update from the Energy Commission, again, preliminary staff assessment PSA is out now. We expect a workshop in Rosamond in early June, late May. That's subject to Energy Commission scheduling, but that will take public comment on that draft environmental document. That will be refined into a final staff assessment this summer. We will have evidentiary hearings, a presiding, presiding members' proposed decision in late fall, and the Energy Commission is targeting a 2025 final decision for the project. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Supervisor Parlier.
Well, Kurt, we've met several times, and this is a very exciting day for not only Kern County, East Kern, but really for the state. Very innovative technologies that are going to be a game changer for energy storage, the unique opportunity to provide just sustainable energy and jobs for the community. When I say community, really communities, these people are going to live and work in the surrounding areas of Rosemont, Cow City, Boron, Tehachapi, and all the ancillary benefits that are going to go along with that employment. And I want to thank you for coming to Kern County, and I want to thank Lorelei and her staff for all the hard work and dedication that they've put in this project. And I want to thank my colleagues also for their support on this project too, as it's been moving forward, and, and your team too, Kurt, they've been wonderful. I see representatives from ARMAC, the Rosemont Municipal Advisory Committee here, along with numerous others. And again, I want to thank them for their support, and again, for you for coming to Kern County.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, you've made a great choice, Kern County. As you saw this afternoon, we take just as seriously the care of our, of our furry little friends, as well as the behavior of our neighbors, right? I mean, as serious as the respect we give our corporate partners, you know, it's Kern County is a great place that way. And so, you've made a good choice, and it's a fine planning department and an incredible county. And our local hire provisions are very exciting because that has been completely transformative for Kern County. We, you know, we have other metricses, I'm sure you've seen them, that we, you know, struggle in some areas of educational attainment, literacy. Our people are the hardest working, you know, we are the, you know, we feed and fuel the nation and have, for 100 years here, been the energy experts of Southwest United States, arguably the country. I think we have the best, best planning department in the nation. I've actually been to many across the nation in my time in local government leadership. So, you know, you really have made a great choice, and Kern County welcomes you, and we're excited to, we're excited for this project and the prospect that it brings for, for jobs and for keeping Kern County on the cutting edge, because I think we're the best. And you look pretty good too, so I think we're a good match.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Hello, my name's Gene Melchers, I'm the President of the Rosemont Chamber of Commerce, and I want to speak in support of this project. I am, Rosemont and Boron and Mojave have always been a little depressed with jobs and well-paying positions, and I think this will encourage other industries to come to Rosemont, Mojave area, and I feel like this is a great fit for us. So, I'm in, we're in very much support of it, thank you.
Thank you for what you do, Rosemont. Hello, welcome, good afternoon.
Hello, my name's Claire Scotty, I'm the Executive Director of the Greater Tehachapi Chamber of Commerce, and it's an honor to be here today and to address the board. While I have many other people who will probably speak more toward the economic impact, I can say that Hydrostore and Willow Rock Energy Storage Center have already made a huge impact on the communities around them. They've supported local chambers, businesses, and they've already invested in these communities, and they've listened, and they've been very involved. And so, I'm here to share my voice in support of this letter to go to the CEC and to show that Kern County is an amazing place to have a business and to support this diverse and ever-growing economic industry.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I tell my friends outside of Kern County who haven't visited here, and they, "Oh, what's it like and why are you still there?" I hear. I say, "Well, you know, Kern County is affordable place to live and not too far from the beach, and of course, only a couple hours from California, so not a bad place. Come on down, please."
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Corey Costello, the Assistant City Manager for the City of Tehachapi. And just like this physical project, there's a lot below the surface with Hydrostore and Willow Rock in terms of impact. And obviously, you've seen the, the property tax that the county will receive and the short-term construction jobs and 40 or so permanent jobs at, at build-out. But below the surface is where cities like Tehachapi, over 20 miles away, that our impact will, will be felt. Renewable energy and storage jobs have about an eight and nine job multiplier effect, upstream and downstream of the energy created with this project. So, someone has to feed, house, provide services to these employees and give them a community to call home, and that's where we come in. We believe that based on the other industries in East Kern, the City of Tehachapi will receive a good portion of these employees, whether the permanent or even just the job multiplier from these employees. These are high-paying, family-sustaining jobs that also speak to emerging technologies that will impact our career technical education programs for our students and our future workforce. So, understanding that trend, as with other impactful projects in East Kern, the City of Tehachapi via the Tehachapi City Council has already provided a letter of support for this project. As we embrace the concept of East Kern Rising, the city also asked of this board also offer their support for Willow Rock as this project moves forward theirs, towards their state entitlement. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, good afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Christina Scrivener, and I am a 20-year resident of District 2. I've formerly served on the Tehachapi City Council, and currently, I'm elected to the Kern Community College District Board of Trustees. I chair the Kern Economic Development Foundation with Richard Chapman here. I'm also was appointed into my second term by a four-star general out of Edwards Air Force Base for their Community Leader Program and am the Director here for goodness health Kern County. So, with all of those hats, we're talking about education, healthcare, economic development, aerospace and defense, and this project really is a perfect fit for this region. We have a legacy and a rich history of really finding that beautiful blend of innovation and harnessing our natural, God-given resources to build a community around us that really has a future for our children. So, I also happen to be the mother of four beautiful, worthy children that are looking to pursue an education here and want to stay here with a job that can support a family. This, this project, as I said, is a perfect complement to the growth that we're seeing. We have NASA, Mojave, our own spaceport, we have two military installations, and I do believe that this is going to be a game changer to continue to create a, a region of innovation, economic development. And for those reasons, I hope that this board will continue to support the project initially with this letter and beyond, because I believe that the residents of East Kern are really interested in deliberate development, and I believe this, this project is that.
Standing. Great job, thank you. Good to see you. Come on down, sir, please state your name for the record, and good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors. My name is Anthony Myers, I'm a co-founder of Safe Haven Kids League of California City. Also, we umbrella Safe Haven Kids League and Community Resources of California. This amazing company. Amazing. We're based in, in California City, and we serve East Kern County. We've been a part of this amazing company, Hydrostore, Byway Russell, of course, and for the last couple of years. They came on when we were actually launched off our community resource side, and we, we got into food and security and helped families in need. We were attempting at that time to serve about 50 families with Thanksgiving dinner, with, with a turkey or a ham. Hydrostore came on board and just, I'm going to make this shortened things, but just that in that first year, we were able to serve about 150 families with their help in East Kern County. They, they had Thanksgiving dinner. We provided hams or turkeys with full food boxes. And to match that, we'd done so well and we worked so well with them, we went into the, into January, February, we did our winter coat giveaway, and of course, you know, we was, we, we put winter coats on the kids of East Kern County during the wintertime to, you know, to try to keep them warm. We were looking to do maybe 100 coats. Hydrostore said, "We can do better." We did 300. And they came back around and said, "You know what, your Thanksgiving event next year we're going to sponsor." And that's just what they did, they sponsored it. And when I say they sponsored it, they sponsored it. We fed 300 and 65 families hams or turkeys in East Kern this past 2024. This has been amazing. When I tell you that we were led over Safe Haven Kids League of California City, Safe Haven Kids League Community Resource was led over this bridge by Byway Russell. And at the other side of that bridge, when the smoke and, and fog cleared, Hydrostore was sitting right there with open arms to Safe Haven, and they invited us into this family. And this has all been taking place, and I'm saying, the last, within the last couple of three years. And even on to this year here, where we just got involved in a winter help, we did a winter health fair in March of this year with the coat giveaway to the kids of our community, and they came right aboard and stamped on that one as well, and I think we gave over about 250 coats. And you know, we did that with, with Kern Family Healthcare, and we could not have gotten that done with them as well, but they're in this room as well, and I want to thank them and things, because without them partnering with Safe Haven, with Hydrostore, we're Haven, with Hydrostore, we're meeting the needs of East Kern County. We do a lot of work in East Kern County. We're a nonprofit. We're a small team. My amazing daughter is here. She's part of our board, love her to death. And we could not get this done without this amazing company being a part of us. Hydrostore, can we give them a round of applause, y'all? Safe Haven thanks you. We all, we love you. We're grateful to be a part of your family. You've taken us into this family. I mean, we thank the board here. Chris, you're amazing. You know that already from us. I mean, he's a part, been a part in helping out with Safe Haven.
He's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, he's really good. I mean, knowing the work that we've done in East Kern, with them growing, Safe Haven is growing. We've added on to our community resources. We're looking at hiring people and getting into the job field. They encourage that. They're being more of a motivator for us to want to grow and do more for East Kern. This is not a company. This is a company about people. They love people, and this is the topic on this. They ain't even broke ground yet. They haven't even broke ground. They ain't put a piece, kicked a piece of dirt up. So we already know if they're doing this at this magnitude and challenging us to be better at this magnitude, just imagine when the ground breaks. We are grateful for you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You guys are amazing. I yield the rest of my time back to the chair.
You know, well, we get Broadway in Eastern Kern. I know where I'm going. You are really just marvelous energy to have in here today. Thank, I love how you said they brought you into family. I mean, that's so Kern County. But some people lose their way, and keeping that is a central pillar, and I appreciate that, that you haven't. And it sounds like we're off to the right start.
That is hard to top, but I'll try my best. Hi, Madam Chair and fellow supervisor. I'm Richard Chapman, President and CEO of the Kern Economic Development Corporation. I do share the previous speaker's passion and excitement. This project's actually garnering the excitement of Wall Street, federal level, obviously our community. We've been in strong support of the project for about three years. And, you know, the wonderful thing about Hydrostore, they, as the previous speaker mentioned, they are a community player from day one. They're very active in our East Kern Economic Alliance, as well as the Energy Summit. They're always ready, willing, and able to talk about the project and really just, you know, an incredible steward and committed to Kern County. And, you know, we are the energy capital of the West. I think we're going to go with the West now versus California.
Nice.
And we have more renewable energy than any county in the country from what I, from my analysis.
Yeah, we're sixty percent.
Yeah. And then, yeah, in the state, right? So I think we have over twenty thousand megawatts planned permitted or already installed. And I'm thinking about this innovation corridor, right? Because we had Pacific Steel Groundbreaking a while back. We have Mojave Air and Spaceport, the Terigen and the AES projects, largest wind center in the world, I mean, the country. So, it's all happening in Kern County. And so it's really exciting to be part of on this endeavor. We've already heard about the economic impacts. Again, the great thing, obviously, jobs and capital investment, but taxes, right? Tax revenue, that's an important leg of the stool, which they are not excluded from property taxes. So, that is, those roads, schools, you know, are going to be paid for partially by this project.
That's my, my favorite part is that part, Richard. Thank you.
That, so, yeah, so that's the three legs of the economic development stool. And, you know, there, it's just a pleasure, a pleasure to work with them. And this is an incredible economic development project as part of our portfolio. I talked about the other companies that are calling Kern County home. And so definitely welcome Hydrostore to the party, and respectfully ask for your support of the project.
Thank you, Richard. Come on down. Everybody's feeling good.
Joel McKay, ARMAC, representing the community of Rosemont. We've already talked about the tax dollars, the jobs, everything. I want to tell you, when this project started, Kurt came, they're already part of our community. They come to our community meetings. He's been to several of our community meetings. He's always in our community. You never see executives from a corporation intertwined. They're already part. These conditions that Kern County and the Planning Commission's putting on them aren't cheap. So that's already showing. They're already a good neighbor. And this is showing that, hey, they're committed to our community, keeping up our roads, you know, enriching our fire department, bringing in safety equipment. That's going to benefit our community. And that, these conditions already show that they're going to continue to be a good neighbor. So I urge you, please support this. Our community needs this, and like I said, we look forward to work and continue to work with you, Kurt, and Hydrostore. So, thank you very much for all you do for us.
How nice. Thank you for that. Good afternoon, sir.
How are you, ma'am?
Very good. Thank you.
All right, guys. My name is Kelly Carden. I'm the Chair of the Rosemont Municipal Advisory Council. And I'm here to strongly support Hydrostore's Willa Rock Energy Storage Center. And I urge you guys to do the same. Hydrostore's addressed our environmental concerns with transparency. They've shared details reporting with the California Energy Commission, and also with our community. My wife actually can call Natalie pretty much anytime she needs or something with the chamber work. They, their technology using just seventy acres, less than seventy acres, it protects the air, the water, and ecosystems. They're proving their commitment to my town's well-being. My grandfather came to Rosemont in nineteen sixty-five, and he actually drilled one of Kern County's, at the time in East Kern, the deepest well in the area. So I, you know, when companies come and talk about economic impact, that means something to me, because my grandfather had great forethought, and it's an entire area's water board that's at risk. And they've done a great job with that. You know, economically, the project's earned great seven hundred construction jobs, twenty-five to forty permanent jobs, and over five hundred dollars in original impacts. They've really shown leadership. Also, they're a great neighbor. They've put their money where their mouth is. With engagement, communication, and charitable giving, my community is very excited to continue this relationship. You know, this project balances environmental care with economic growth for Rosemont and Kern County. And this is the kind of neighbor that we should be encouraging to come here. So on behalf of my neighbors, my family, and myself, I strongly ask for support. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Marissa Fols, from Tehachapi.
I recognize you. Welcome back.
I'm actually here as a representative of my nonprofit, Guardians Around the Earth. So, first, I'm not against this project. This project is amazing for the county. The first, all I want to say is waving my little environmental flag for the impact on the commuters, the visual impact on the commuters all along fourteen. It's a huge project. So, and that's one of the last pristine desert ecosystems in the region, with native wildflowers all along that area and all around the hills. So, it will definitely have an impact with, visually, and with the flora and fauna of the area, and the endangered Joshua trees that are on this spot. But for all the economic rate, it's fantastic. It's just the little bit of environmental that's a challenge.
I hear you.
So, just saying my, waving my little flag.
Appreciate your, yeah, of course. Big flag. Doesn't need to be a little flag. It's all important. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Director Ovea.
Well, fortunately, I know how to speed read, so I have pulled up the preliminary assessment. I have not found the rest of these conditions yet, but I have found one and two. So they are recommending the one point nine million dollars for the urban search and rescue vehicle, and they are recommending the two point four million dollars a year for however long it takes them to build this. I am going to be testifying. If your board approves this letter today and sends this letter, that'll be the first docketed support letter from your board. I will be speaking to the hearing officers at the Rosemont Workshop, and I look forward to finding the rest of these conditions in the preliminary assessment. And if you have any further questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Directors. Chris Parley, are you, is that right now that you're, is that from earlier?
It's now.
Okay, please. Floor is yours.
If everyone's done.
I don't see anyone else here. Okay, please.
Well, it's my honor to make a motion to approve this letter with staff recommendations.
Okay. And I'm confident that the applicant today, who already has an impeccable reputation, that's rare, that you've listened to the concerns, and that those will be part of, you know, how you handle yourself in Kern County. Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All ayes.
Okay, congratulations. Congratulations. Moving on, we have item number forty under the CAO's office, and this is a response to a February twenty-five, twenty twenty-five referral regarding county and Board of Supervisors' role and responsibilities related to the Kern Health Systems. For those of you who are here on this matter, my apologies for, you know, the long afternoon. This is unusual. But, you know, as you've heard, all important stuff, all Kern County stuff. So now, we're going to have a presentation on Kern Health Systems. I understand your directors, the Kern Health Systems directors here, Emily, are you here? There you are. Excellent and welcome. You see staff is setting up at staff table. And we have some packets going around. I'll distribute them to my colleagues.
Thank you for your patience. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Elsa Martinez, your Assistant CAO. Let me first start by thanking your board for recommendable governors and strategic oversight across many complex responsibilities. Today you heard, just this afternoon, you heard about animal welfare, energy, and now we're going to start a conversation on healthcare. So, big topics, complex topics, but very important. As Madam Chair stated, your board made a referral to the county administrative office to report back on the county and the board's roles and responsibilities related to Kern Health Systems to ensure proper governors. So before, I think it's important to understand the purpose of Kern Health Systems. Medi-Cal, California Medicaid program, is the largest Medicaid program in the country. Medi-Cal is California's health insurance program for low-income children, people with disabilities, and low-wage workers who do not get health insurance through their job. Currently, over fifty percent of Kern County residents receive their coverage through Medi-Cal. For low-income seniors, Medi-Cal steps in to cover what is not covered by Medicare, including nursing home care. Our Kern County Department of Human Services performs initial and ongoing eligibility and redeterminations for Medi-Cal benefits based on federal and state guidelines. Your board or Kern Health Systems do not have authority to determine eligibility. Those are based on state and federal guidelines. So since the nineteen nineties, Medi-Cal has been transitioning away from a fee-for-service payment and delivery system. So under that fee-for-service, Medi-Cal beneficiaries can't see any provider that accepts Medi-Cal. What they're transitioning to is what we call a managed care model. Medi-Cal beneficiaries receive their coverage through managed care plans that contracted by the state. Managed care plans contract with state networks of doctors, hospitals, and other healthcare providers to deliver Medi-Cal benefits. That means healthcare. They use a network of providers to offer services, and this helps control costs and ensure quality care. Managed care plans are primary care-focused and emphasize coordinated care. So the state pays the managed care plans what we call a monthly capitation rate for each member, also known as per member per month. So plans negotiate payment rates then with the network of providers. There are some services that are not covered under managed care. So this is called carve-out services. And this includes especially mental health and drug medical. Those services are managed by our Department of Behavioral Health Services. Pharmacy benefits recently have transitioned from managed care plans to the state. And in-home supportive services, those are managed by the county and the state. So of course, the state couldn't make it easy. We couldn't just have one model of managed care. We have multiple models across different counties. There's what we call the county organized health system. That's a single plan that a county runs. We have geographic managed care. This is a multiple plans, commercial plans usually. And then you have what we call a regional model. So where you have one or two commercial plans across several counties, usually small counties. There's a single plan. That means there's only one option in one county, usually a commercial plan. And what we have here in Kern County is what we call the two-plan. So we have a commercial plan and a local initiative. And I'll explain what a local initiative is, which is what Kern Health System is. So here in Kern County, we have Anthem Blue Cross and Kaiser Permanente as the commercial plans. And then we have Kern Health Systems as what we call the local initiative. So what is a local initiative? A local initiative is a, local initiatives were designed to include traditional providers such as federally qualified healthcare centers and disproportionate shared hospitals. So when the state was transitioning to this model, there was a fear of counties and the safety net providers that by doing this model, which is an essential HMO, a lot of the individuals with Medi-Cal would transition to commercial plans, leaving those disproportionate shared hospitals and clinics only with the uninsured and not funding. So the local initiative was created. So to that effect, your board on December sixth, nineteen ninety-four formed a local initiative to maintain local control over Medi-Cal delivery and ensure access to healthcare for our population, as well as to retain safety net providers such as Kern Medical. And in fact, the initial Kern Health Systems was housed in the Kern Medical Campus. So what is the local initiative? I think, I think it's important to understand that pursuant to state law and county ordinance, Kern Health System is a public agency that is an entity separate from the county. Any obligation of Kern Health Systems are not the obligations of the county, and the county is not liable for any act or omission of the, of Kern Health Systems. So what is your board's authority? So, your board's authority has to be established in the ordinance. So, Ordinance G six one five five added Chapter two nine four to the county ordinance code, creating Kern Health Systems, a special county health authority. And again, originally, it was established, you know, physically at Kern Medical Center. Your board authority has to be expressly stated in the county ordinance or by state law, okay? And to that effect, subsection C of the Welfare and Institution Code, Section fourteen oh eight seven point three eight, provides that the ordinance shall specify the membership of the governing board of the health authority, the qualifications for individual members, the manner of appointment, the selection or removal of the board members, and how long they should serve, and any other matter the Board of Supervisors deems necessary or convenient for the conduct of health authority activities. So as stated in the staff report, this language provides your board with broad authority for any matter the board deems necessary or appropriate for Kern Health Systems' operation. So your board has established this framework by appointing the board members to the Kern Health Systems, which in turn, they govern the operations of the health authority. So the directors of Kern Health Systems have to establish and are responsible for establishing and operating a comprehensive managed care system. They have to address challenges in delivering public assisted medical care. They have to demonstrate ways of promoting quality care and cost efficiency. They're responsible for negotiating and entering to contracts authorized by relevant sections of the Welfare and Institution Code. And they have to arrange for the provision of healthcare services as stipulated by the law. So let's talk about the ordinance. So the enabling ordinance has been amended several times. In the most recent amendment, your board increased the Board of Directors to sixteen members, including ten community representatives. And as stated in the staff report, some of those appointees have expired terms. And as stated in the staff report, some of those appointees have expired terms. So each one of the members are allowed to hold office for three, and this, too many threes in this ordinance, three, three-year terms until, or until the appointment of his or her successor, so that's nine years. So they may serve a maximum of three consecutive years, so nine consec, they could serve nine consecutive years. Members who serve a maximum of three consecutive years could be off for three years and then serve again for another three, three years, so that's another nine years. You're talking, you could have a member that could serve eighteen years or until if you don't reappoint, even longer. The enabling ordinance does provide for removal from office, so a member could be removed at any time if he or she no longer represent the interest that, or the group he or she was appointed to represent. So for example, you have a safety net care provider. If that individual doesn't qualify anymore as a safety net care provider, your Board could remove that individual. It also provides that if they're absent for three consecutive regular meetings, without the Kern Health System Board permission, or they could be removed, or for any reason that could constitute grounds for removal of a local agency or public officer. It could also be, individuals could also be removed by recommendations of your Boards, two-thirds of your Board. So let's talk about the qualifications. In the ordinance, the qualifications consist of being of twenty-one years of age and either work or reside in the county at the time of the appointment. So if, if they're twenty-one, they work in the county and then they move out of the county, they still can serve as long as they were appointed at the time they work in the county. So and members of the governor board can be chosen by their willingness and ability to officially carry out the purpose of the health authority, but we don't have qualifications to indicate what that means. So in the staff report, I go into detail about the current issues tied to Kern Health Systems, the state changes, and the greater coordination that is needed with county agencies. So over the last fifteen years, you know, Medi-Cal managed care were, were created to provide high-quality and accessible cost-effective care, I mean, managed care. But in the nineties, you saw a great expansion. The state, as I told you, the state of California, the federal government determined eligibility, so there was a great expansion across the state for benefits. And again, in twenty-ten, the role of the managed care changed again with, with healthcare reform, there was also an expansion of people that qualify for Medicaid, Medi-Cal. And then they transitioned seniors in person with disabilities to the managed care. So those are high-cost population for, for the managed care. So now, currently, Kern Health System has over four-hundred-thousand members. Again, that's close to half of our population in the county. So there's a lot of new requirements that have come across managed cares from the state. Managed care are also responsible now for providing non-specialty mental health services. So as I said, this is what they call the mild-to-moderate mental health conditions. If it's a specialty, it goes to our Department of Behavioral Health, but if it's a mild-to-moderate, the health plan has to cover those benefits. In the two-thousand, the state required the managed care plans to implement the initial requirements of the health home programs. So what that program does, it, it literally takes social services into healthcare. So if you have beneficiaries that are experiencing healthcare issues because of what they call social determinants of health, they're homeless, they, they don't have transportation, now managed care has to be responsible for those services. And again, the state, again, in twenty-twenty-two, is launched the California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal. It's called Cal-Lane. So they're trying to transform Medi-Cal again into an integrated model that takes social and health and kind of put them together. It also provides additional services for the population in the jail. So in addition, as I mentioned, pharmacy benefits have transitioned from managed care to the Department of Healthcare Services, and now the managed care have limited responsibility when it comes to pharmacy. On top of that, up top of those requirements, now the state is also asking for enhanced standards of quality of access, so they need to have providers across the county, they need to have accountability, health equity, and transparency. So managed cares have been required to evolve and provide a more coordinated and integrated care, requiring that they work closely together with our county agencies, community-based social services, and then supported housing agencies. Most recently, the state transitioned transitional housing into the managed care, another service that you would think it has nothing to do with healthcare, but as they combine social with healthcare, they're transitioning those services. So we, we think that there has to be a greater coordination with managed care and the counties. The counties have been traditionally been the provider of preventive healthcare, behavioral health, and social services. Some of these responsibilities would now have to be coordinated with the managed care plans. Managed care plans have to evolve on how they work with the county. So reviewing all that information, there's certain things that your Board can do. As stated, your Board governors comes by the appointment of the Board that manages Kern Health Systems. So there are certain things in the ordinance that I think would be appropriate for your Board to consider. Review the composition and size of the Board to ensure that they're still appropriate for Kern Health Systems' operations. As I mentioned, responsibilities have changed significantly over the last fifteen years. They still have a pharmacy representative, but they're not responsible for pharmacy benefits anymore. I think you should, your Board, since there has to be a little bit more coordination with county agencies, your Board should consider adding perhaps a behavioral health representative or a social services representative to the Board. In addition, there's Board members that have been, terms expires for many years. I think we need to review the existing Board appointees, or either replace them or reappoint them. I, I think your Board should consider adding qualifications, kind of tying up the ordinance a little bit, to address, to ensure that we appoint people to the Board that have the qualifications to meet the new requirements. And, and we're willing to consider any other item that your Board want to refer to staff. I did have a conversation with the Executive Director of Kern Health Systems. They're willing to work with the county in any direction your Board wishes to go. So this concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Can I just say, this is so helpful and user-friendly. I'm very grateful. This has been very helpful. Thank you. Supervisor Couch, thank you for kickstarting this and for putting your particular eye on these matters. You know, you've, you've been a big part of the brain trust here. Do you want to give us some thoughts? Yeah, would you kick it off? Good way to put it. Thank you.
I just think with the environment today, with Medi-Cal funding, I don't even know how to describe it, it's in flux, there's a lot going on, and with the number of people that we represent that are on Medi-Cal, we have some responsibility that we should be taking, maybe taking a closer look at the whole program and the fiscal stewardship and scarce resources. It's all tax dollars at the end of the day. And so I'm, I'm in favor of us, sort of from a, from a, from a high level of us having more involvement in, in Kern Health Systems. And that, I should preface, should have prefaced all this by saying, this is not directed at any individual or any board member or anybody's.
Or the director.
Well, anybody, yeah.
Yeah, anybody.
It's just, I think it's incumbent upon us to be more engaged in this.
Perfectly stated.
So I have a couple of questions for you, Elsa. I've been, I've been thinking about this a lot since you've, since I read your, your administrative report, which you write, it is dense, and I don't mean dumb, I mean, there's a lot in there, and I'm surprised you, you packed an awful lot into just, you know, five or six pages, whatever that is. We have the ability, the Board of Supervisors, to reduce or increase the size of the Kern Health Systems Board, or to, or to modify the makeup, for example, the pharmacists, whom I don't even know. You're suggesting we don't need a pharmacist board member designation?
So the pharmacy was, pharmacy designation, the, the way the law reads that you could appoint a combination of pharmacy, hospital providers, is not restrictive to anyone. I think just from an operational perspective, because pharmacy benefits have now transitioned to the state, there's limited that Kern Health System has to do, but now they added a behavioral health component, it will be perhaps appropriate for your Board to consider switching that.
So the reason that we wrote the ordinance was written the way it was back then, is pharmacy was a big part of this, now it's not, now mental health is a bigger part, so, okay. And we, how, how would we change this? It's by ordinance, so it would, it's a process, it would have to come back. Forgotten, do we do a first and a second reading now on an ordinance, or do we just do one?
I would defer to council. It really depends on the ordinance, I think.
And I, I want to give everyone plenty of opportunity, I don't want to rush anything here, and I think, we, we can, obviously, we can modify this ordinance, but there's no limit to the number of times we can modify it. So if we approach this incrementally, if we find that in six months, or a year, or some timeframe, we want to make another change, we can, right? Am I right about that?
I will defer to council, but I believe you are correct.
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. Yes, you are correct. It would require two readings, and you can change them in the future as the need arrives.
So it takes, from the time you have an ordinance drafted that you can put on our agenda, it still takes a month or so to, to go into effect because we've got to see it a couple of times, right? Can members of the Board of Supervisors sit on the Kern Health Systems Board?
So I asked that question of council, and, and we believe that as long as not all five of you are on the Board, you could have perhaps one or two representatives.
A maximum of two?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm interested in this, either having one or two and an alternate, and I'm not, I don't, I don't have a particular preference, I mean, just a presence of the Board of Supervisors there. Whether it's one or two, we can talk about it. I don't, I don't really have, know if I have a preference. You mentioned qualifications earlier, so do you have any thoughts on what the specific, do you have specific qualifications in mind that you think we should be considering, or where were you, where were you kind of headed with that?
So when I was researching composition of boards across other managed cares, I think one of the important things to include, and I saw that across every, every single one that I was able to obtain their roster, you have what we call community representatives, but they're really beneficiaries, because they bring a different perspective, like somebody that actually receiving the benefits, understand what it's like to be on Medi-Cal and receive the benefits, and try to make an appointment. I saw that.
So someone who is insured by Kern Health Systems?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I saw that. We also, there's also representatives on the counties on, on those. If you want to have, part of the staff report, I talk about how your Board has not defined safety net, even though we have a safety net representative, but the Kern Health System bylaws actually defines what that is. So we need to bring those two in sync for our, for, to appointment to the Board, like kind of redefine either in the ordinance or defer to the bylaws. Now, keep in mind, your Board does not approve Kern Health Systems' bylaws. That could be another requirement that your Board could have on the ordinance, that you approve their bylaws. If, if allowed by state law, we can add that to the ordinance, so that way their bylaws and our ordinance are always in sync. But that would be one of the options. I think you're right with the way the, the way Medicaid is right now in flux, we don't know what that's going to look like, we don't know if the population is going to shrink. I think having a safety net provider, you know, understands, I think is important, but I think we need to define it to make sure that it really fits the safety net qualifications.
I know there was a thought at one time of reducing the size.
Your Board has.
As, as we look at it, as we, if we want to add a member of the Board or two, and if we want to add somebody from behavioral health, and somebody from Department of Human Services, it feels like we're increasing the size, not decreasing it. How do, how do we go about that?
So your Board has ten community representatives, and I mentioned there's some community representatives whose terms has expired. So you could do a, change the ordinance to replace those incrementally as, as terms expire. You could choose to keep five community representatives, one appointed by each Board, and then take the other five positions to restructure with Board Supervisors, Medi-Cal beneficiary, county, behavioral health, or social services. Or you could, as terms expire, reduce that size of the Board to only five, and again, as the terms expire, start appointing different qualifications. So it, it will take time, as you mentioned, it's not going to be overnight, because my understanding that if they don't have an expired term, they, they stay there. I think council can correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't say may stay, it says they, they're entitled to their term until they either replace or their term expires, so you have to remove them.
That was a legal opinion, I think, that was given a while ago.
And, and we can revisit it if your Board wishes to do that.
So, let me ask you, the process for going forward, are you looking for us today? I think your recommendation is just send this back to you with some of our thoughts. I'm going to throw another one at you, and I, and I make this recommendation because I don't want you to go off, hear what we have to say, try to put five different people's thoughts together in one ordinance. What would you think of an ad hoc committee that could sit with you a couple of times and talk these things through and come up with a recommendation to bring back?
Supervisor Couch, through the stage.
Am I complicating it, or am I making it easier?
I, I don't think you're complicated it. I think having a board members sit at the table, I think we need to also talk to Kern Health Systems, and I think coming together as a group makes sense, and we can have those discussions and then bring them back for full Board consideration.
Okay.
And I heard you're volunteering.
I, since I brought it up, I guess I would have to. By the way, one, one last question. Do the, either of the FQHCs, either Omni or Clinica, do they, I believe they alternate a board seat?
That is correct.
Every three years? They move off every year? How does, how do they do that?
I, I was on the Board.
I bet you, I bet you there's somebody here that knows. Could we, could we ask Mr. Durant to come down and tell us?
Hi, Mr. Durant, welcome. Good afternoon.
We should probably know the answer to this question, but I don't know it.
Neither do I.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Board of Supervisors, first of all, I want to just say thank you for the foresight to be willing to look at this on a regular basis. You know, healthcare changes every other month, and it's important just to really keep the pulse on what our responsibilities are as an organization, but also what your responsibility is to ensure that the Board composition is reflective of the current state of affairs when it comes to healthcare. So for the FQHCs, they alternate, it's usually three to six years. They sometimes, I think the last FQ representative was there for the full three-year terms.
So one serves a three-year term, and then at the end of that, the other would?
You can reappoint.
Clinica's on for three, Omni's on for three, then Clinica, then Omni.
Normally, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So it's, I, I, I don't even know what I'm actually going to ask, but I'm going to, I'm going to blurt it out there. Should they both be at the table, at this, on the Board at the same time? Is it good enough to have them there alternating? I know Kern Medical is there by virtue of the position, right? The CEO of Kern Medical is on the Board always.
Correct. I, I think maybe that's something that Elsa, the C A O.'s office, and through your subcommittee can explore.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Couch, through the chair, that would be a change to the ordinance, because right now, the federally qualified clinics are taking the spot of the safety net care provider, and right now, under the ordinance, we have one seat. So if your Board chooses them to be both at the same time, then your Board would need to change the ordinance to allow for the safety net care provider to include more than one seat at the Board, Board of Directors.
Okay, well, those are my, I, I want to refer this back to you. My, my sense is we need to, some ad hoc committee made up of some members of the Board of Supervisors, apparently me.
Yep.
apparently me, one of them would, should sit with you and come up with a recommendation to bring back to the board that we can, we can move on.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
David, thank you. This is really excellent. I'm really excited to see where it's going to go. This is, you know, our, our director here, thank you, Emily. Your, your thoughts are just completely spot on and consistent where we are, so thank you. Okay, so is that, do we have a, make a motion on what Supervisor Couch just indicated, or is that just enough direction to staff?
I just had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Flores.
Just so I understand, is our, is our idea for an ad hoc committee just our, our board and CEO staff, or is it, is it inclusive of current health systems?
My thought is that the ad hoc committee is made up of two members of the board of supervisors, but the current health systems, whomever they would like to have attend, would certainly be there to give input to or...
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And answer questions or provide their recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Flores. Okay, so we have a motion. Correct?
So that's a motion. Do we need to?
Public comment?
Well, we're going to get to, I'm going to, I'm, I'm willing to do it. Do we need to ask for volunteers from the board? I'm assuming that, can the, can the chair just nominate an ad hoc committee on her own?
Supervisor Couch, you can nominate or you can volunteer. It just has to be voted on by the board, who will make up the ad hoc committee.
Okay, so thank you, Supervisor Couch. I was not aware that we were comprising a committee right now. I thought this was direction of staff to come back and give us a sense about whether we're going to vote and do an ad hoc committee. So my apologies, supervisor. What's your understanding, council?
From what I just heard, I thought you were going to form an ad hoc committee to make, to come up and then come back and report.
Okay.
But that was my understanding. I could have gotten that wrong.
Chairman Perez, if I may, I'm, I'm signing it for the next committee after this committee, so I'm going to take myself out of this committee.
I, I had thought the same thing about myself because I want...
Just, just, just so I don't overburden myself with committees.
Got it.
Not, not that this isn't important. I like, I like current health systems. I'm going to help, and I'm going to value the input that the committee comes back to the board, and we'll have a robust discussion. But just for, for this quick internal purposes, I'm going to wait for the next committee.
Okay.
Which is, which is get, get.
Yep, get, I get you. So then we need to then establish the ad hoc committee now, and it will really be the ad hoc committee that we begin to flesh these issues out. And this is very, very premature, very premature. But we are establishing the apparatus by which we look and think of these, of these issues and improve them for the community. Peters, were you looking to weigh in?
No, no.
Or was that you volunteering for the committee?
Neither one.
Oh, man. Okay, so...
If, if we need another person on the ad hoc committee, I don't mind doing it.
Parley, your thoughts?
Well, I'm the new guy, so I thought I was going to get it, but, but we could flip for it, but if Philip wants it, that's fine, but either way, I don't care. Happy to serve.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter to me either way. I, I trust your opinion as well, so if you have, you prefer to serve on it, I'm happy to defer to you. If, if not, I'm happy to do it myself.
I, I think we're back to the flip, flipping a coin.
Yeah, we sure are.
Let me put your mind to these. I anticipate this is two, maybe three meetings of an hour, maybe, or less.
Vice chair, I'd be happy to serve.
Okay, let's do that. I think that, that, that sounds right. Supervisor Peters, you're good with that? Okay. I'm thinking very seriously about Supervisor Peters' brand-new baby at home. And I think, you know, of all these things we balance in life, that, that's the one that it's been, it's brand-new, so it just, that's a lot. But I don't mean anything by that. You're more than capable, but just being a little gracious on time because this is, this is a big job. So this is for the creation of the ad hoc? Do I need to take a public comment? Okay, public comment. Now's the time.
Well, I don't know if this is specifically about public, you know, the creation of this, but I think that's great. There's more transparency for the public, so I'm all supportive of that. I just wanted to thank Ms. Martinez for, you know, this great presentation, and I thought it was so helpful to know that for, in Kern County, that we have 50% of our, of your constituents are covered by Medi-Cal slash Medicaid. Of course, Medi-Cal is funded both by the state of California, 50%, and 50% by Medicaid at the federal level. So of course, I appreciate David Couch's concern about what's going on with regard to the finances and the very fluid situation that we find ourselves in right now with regard to funding from the federal level. So thank you so much for bringing that up. I appreciate that. And so important, the federally qualified healthcare centers. My daughter is a nurse practitioner in LA, and she does work for an FHQC, I guess is how we say that. And so important for our communities that we have those kind of services. Thank you so much. I think that it's a great idea as far as the ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Janine, and thank you for producing good offspring. Anybody else here? Okay, very good. So we've closed the public, public portion. We have a motion from Supervisor Couch that would create himself and Supervisor Polier to the subcommittee. It'll be in English, so that's a good thing. And Supervisor Couch, you had something else? No?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Did you make the second? Supervisor Flores did. Thank you, Supervisor Flores.
Thank you. The motion passes all eyes.
Very good. Now, we're going to move rapidly. We're at the end of the day. It's been a long day, but a productive day. We did have information come to our attention after the normal timeline that it would take to get noticed. And so because we learned the facts and circumstances which warrant our immediate attention due to a 30-day deadline, need for action has come to the attention of today, and we need to consider adding an agenda item. And the motion would be to make the finding that the need to take action on a non-agenda matter occurred after the agenda was posted on Thursday, April 24, 2025. County officials learned the facts and circumstances which warrant the board's immediate attention due to a 30-day deadline. At an at-large vacancy, regarding an at-large vacancy on the board of directors at the Golden Empire Transit District occurred on March 19, 2025, the board failed, or BOD, board of directors failed to fill the vacancy within 30 days as required by California Public Utilities Code, Section 101136, which then requires a vacancy to be filled within 30 days thereafter by the majority vote of a conference committee consisting of two members of the Kern County Board of Supervisors, two members of the Bakersfield City Council, and one member of the Board of Directors. The conference committee's 30-day deadline is May 18, 2025, which leaves little time for a conference committee to meet and fill the vacancy. So right now, entertain a motion to add that item to the agenda. Gentlemen, your consideration?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Excellent. So now, our clerk of the board will help us make sense of this moment to discuss the appointment. Kathy?
Okay. So due to the late hour, I won't go into great detail, just letting your board know that late yesterday afternoon, we received correspondence from the Golden Empire Transit District related to a current vacancy that exists on their board. And as you are aware, the GET board is made up of two board of supervisor member appointments, two city, two, two city council, Bakersfield City Council member appointments, and, I'm sorry, two Bakersfield City Council appointments. It's not the, it's not the city council members that sit on the board. So those four members to the GET board choose the fifth member, which they call the at-large member. Their at-large member resigned March 19th, and pursuant to those PUC regulations you just stated, the GET board had 30 days to fill that position. They failed to do so.
Okay.
So per the PUC regulations, now the board of supervisors must appoint two board of supervisor members to serve on this conference committee. The Bakersfield City Council will be appointing two city council members to serve on this committee. Those four members will then appoint a fifth member, and that committee of five will review the current applications on file and do whatever is necessary to make that at-large vacancy filled. They'll make that appointment.
Who's on first?
Exactly.
And not to add complexity to already a complex process, do we know, once this committee is fully formed, if the committee can choose only from existing applicants or from more applicants at large?
That would be a county council question.
Sorry.
David says yes.
All right, Dave.
Is that helpful? Counsel?
And, and the last cog in this is there's a 30-day window ticking.
Okay. Oh, wow. Okay. Any thoughts, counsel?
Couple thoughts. Number one, I think that the fifth member is chosen by the board of directors and not by the four that are chosen. That's number one. Number two, I don't know the answer as to whether or not it's from existing applicants or from at-large, but I will find that out before.
Okay. Okay. Well, when we have dealt with matters of transportation, particularly the get bus, which have been engaged in for the last 10 years, the, the, so we had a subcommittee process where, at the time, Supervisor Mike Maggard and myself partnered in that process for a couple of reasons. Almost all the ridership and all the issues related to the public transportation system occur east of the 99, almost entirely within what was in the past Supervisor Maggard's district and myself. It is now Supervisor Flores's district. And I, I believe wholeheartedly that these issues really are mine and his primarily. These are kind of our big, major problems, although they implicate the whole county. And so it would be my pleasure and privilege to serve there with Jeff. It's a recommendation I posed to my colleagues.
Thank you. I, I, I would be, well, I want to serve, so I'd be happy with indulgence of my colleagues to serve on that.
I'll move approval with Supervisors Perez and Flores.
That's right.
Thank you very much for the motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Oh, wait, public input on that?
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of the agenda, correct? Any other remaining items?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn in our dear friends that were mentioned this morning. They'll go into our physical record, and they'll receive letters. We will adjourn in their beautiful, glorious legacy and memory. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. So moved. Okay, looks like we're done.